Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight to the Planning Commission of the Township of Abington. We are an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The action of the Planning Commission on agenda items does not reflect a final decision. The Board of Commissioners must render the final action on all agenda items. We'll do the roll call. Mr. DeCello is excused. Ms. Gautier?
Present.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Rosen?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Baugh?
Here.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we start the agenda, I'd like us to review the minutes. And can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have two agenda items this evening. The first is a sketch plan from Robinson and Aubrey Avenue, a sketch plan prepared by Eustace Engineering dated May 23, 2018, and it was submitted for the subdivision of a property having frontage on Robinson and Aubrey Avenues. The plan calls for the property to be subdivided into three lots. All three proposed lots are shown to be served by onsite wells. Two of the three properties are affected by the limits of the floodplain. The properties are zoned within the R4 High Residential District of Ward 5 of the Township of Abington. And if the applicant is here, would you, we'd like to invite you to make a presentation to us on your plans.
We appreciate your time. It's a lot of effort. So I'm here with Danielle Mancini, who is the client on this project. And we are looking to subdivide the piece of land, which is about 3/4 of an acre, into three lots. And I'll bring up the PDF. So this plan is the existing conditions. So the property line is this red line here with an existing house on the corner off the And the darker green is wooded and the lighter green is more brush and grass. And there is a floodplain line right here, this dark blue line. So then we have setbacks from that. Unimproved Robinson Ave here, Clearview and Aubrey Ave right here. These are some of the images. This is the corner of Aubrey and Clearview with a home right here. This was built fairly recently, has onsite water, a well, public sewer, no sidewalks. The neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks. And this property is actually just a little bit under the 7,500 required in this area. This is a view looking down Aubrey and Clearview, and this is looking at the end of Aubrey, so the site's on the left. And this is another view back on the corner house on Aubrey and Clearview. So the plan being proposed is three new houses, 1, 2, 3, two drives off of Aubrey. And we're looking for one drive off of Clearview Ave. Because Robinson is not improved, we were looking for a driveway that goes all the way to Clearview. And I can also get into some of the comments that we received from Mark Penacal, and I can bring up some of those issues for the project. I'll come back to this plan in a minute. So this plan shows the existing water lines in the area. This is our project area. So Aqua has a water line here down the end of Robinson and a line down here near Rothley. So this house here was recently approved with onsite well water, got their permit in 2013, and that's what we're proposing also. So if I may, I'd like to just go through a couple of the comments, and we're looking for some feedback on some of these items. So the comments from Mark Penacal, thank you for the work on that. Mark has recommended that the client build this road out to full standards, and we'll discuss that more. Mark has also recommended sidewalks for the project. And so we'd like to discuss that some more. The site is heavily wooded, so it would be a burden to survey every tree. We were hoping that there was some negotiation for how we would do the survey to do the tree protection and the replacement trees, perhaps take a sample survey out there to identify which trees are there in a certain size area, and then apply that to the property. So that's another item we'd like to talk about in the future. Number four, side yard set. The rear yard setback is 25 feet. And it was pointed out in the review letter that this one, this rear lot, it was reviewed as a rear yard. We reviewed it as a side yard. And so there is the rear yard. So we need to discuss when this edge here turns into a side yard. Because if we had to apply the 25 feet, 25-foot setback from this floodplain line, it would negate being able to put in this house. So we wanted a discussion of where the side yard setback from the floodplain ends compared to the rear. Regarding the fully improving this road here, we also have another idea of having two lots off of Aubrey and doing a flaglot going to the back. But we'd love to hear, we couldn't find that in the ordinance when we looked through it on your requirements for the flaglot, so we just would like input on that. Minor item, driveway aprons are limited to no more than 20 feet in width. So we have 20 feet for the driveways, and the end of it's flared out a little bit more. That can be straightened out to be 20 feet, no problem. So we just would like to know if it's okay to go a little bit wider, just for the flare. Comment seven, a planning module we need to prepare? Yes. Number eight, the plan is required to revise, to be revised to include locations of all other wells. Previous to this meeting, we did a write-to-no request. We got some information. We know there's a well on this lot. We don't know where it is. The permitting that we received doesn't show exactly where it is. So we'll be looking for advice on how to handle showing wells when we're not really sure where they are. We can't go on people's property without their permission. So perhaps there's more files that haven't been discovered yet. We would love to hear your input on that, on how we would handle showing existing wells when the data isn't fully available yet. And item 10, the applicant has advised to review the infill development regulations. And so the infill development regulations, it's defined as between two existing houses. So we wanted an interpretation of whether that applies to this property. And also, this one faces Clearview, and so we're looking at just a side building. So the side of the house has a couple of windows, so it would be a little hard to apply the infill development standards to our new houses. So these are just some of the things that we'd enjoy hearing, feedback anytime or in the future when we have perhaps a sit-down meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to open up the discussion to the members of the Planning Commission for questions.
I have several. One is in regard to the letter, though, not yet. I noticed there was like three junk vehicles on the existing property. I was wondering if those are going to be removed or if they're even, you know, the property owners? It's on Aubrey.
Hi, I'm Danielle Mancini. The vehicles aren't mine. I'm not sure whose they are, but I will work to locate them and have them removed.
Are you currently the owner of the property?
Yes, I am.
Okay. It was just something I noticed in the weeds, especially the one car.
Sure.
But there are several. And then the second question I have, do you know how many houses there are currently on Aubrey, which is a dead-end street into township property?
There's two on Aubrey.
Okay, so it's that corner one and then the one across the other side?
There's, well, this house faces Clearview, but then on Aubrey, across the street, there are two homes. One's a Cape style and another is a two-story.
Okay, so with this possible subdivision, there'd be four total, right?
On Aubrey.
Yeah, I was just thinking for garbage trucks and that kind of thing to make sure that they can, you know, easily go in and out. I didn't count the number of houses, so thank you for that.
Can I interrupt for a minute? If you could both speak into the microphone, we're getting a lot of echoing, and it's very difficult to hear what everyone is saying. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. My other question was regarding Mark's or the Township Code Enforcement letter. For the driveway to go into the township right-of-way, do we have any discretion in, I know it goes more into township property, so I didn't know if we needed, if we could even consider going smaller?
Discretion where?
For the road that they're proposing as their driveway on unimproved Robinson.
On Robinson.
So Kathy, you're talking about the proposed driveway coming in off Robinson?
Yes, since it's the township right-of-way, do we have any discretion into?
The Board has, although the Board of Commissioners has all the discretion they would need, it's a township right-of-way.
Okay.
I mean, they can grant whatever waivers they want from the subdivision land development ordinance that they see fit. The Planning Commission can recommend approval of waivers. The issue that we have with elongated driveways is something you've already brought up. One, how's the driveway constructed? To what standard is it constructed? Can we roll fire equipment into our trash vehicles? It's in a public right-of-way, so now we're responsible for plowing and maintaining it and everything else. So it would have to be constructed even as a driveway to a township standard to handle our ordinance calls for 30 ton in the event we got to run a pumper up that driveway. So is there discretion? Sure there is. Within limits, it's going to happen if you approve a reduced width and reduced length driveway.
Okay.
You're going to have to construct it to a standard that we can still use.
Okay, I just wanted the applicant to kind of hear that part as well.
Can I answer one other question while I'm here?
Sure.
A write-to-no request for wells. Those permits are issued through Montgomery County Health Department, not through Abington Township.
Okay.
So if you're looking for well information as far as location and what permits have been granted, Montgomery County Health Department is where you would go.
So Mark, is that the case for the existing house? They could find that well through the Montgomery County Health Department?
Correct. They issue the permit for it, they inspect the installation of it.
Thank you.
I had one more question for you, Mark, and this is my last question for the applicant as well. The 25-foot setback, is that from the floodplain or from the side yard? Because the number four had said the same.
No, it's actually, the way the ordinance is written, your required setbacks are measured from the edge of any resource right-of-way, which would be edge of wetlands, edge of floodplain, edge of steep slope, edge of stream bed, you know?
So where they're showing it along the floodplain line, that would have to be increased to 25?
Behind the home. To me, that would be a rear yard setback, not a side yard setback, but that's an interpretation on my part.
Okay. Because, I mean, I would like to see the, I guess, your interpretation of the zoning from the floodplain.
Well, the other thing is, we're not really sure what that tan section is on lot number three, the larger lot on Robinson. That's actually marked as future concrete slab.
Yeah.
However, on lots one and two, that same feature's not labeled, so I'm assuming it's a concrete slab, but I'm not real good at guesswork.
Right. Yeah, I think that would have to be resolved as it goes to the next step.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the Planning Commission or recommendations?
Can you identify exactly what issues you'd like us to address? What recommendations or failure to recommend do you want to hear about?
So we would appreciate your input on Robinson Ave. We would also appreciate your input on allowing wells, well water. Otherwise, the runs of new piping to the site would cause a lot of disturbance in work. So there's two places to get well water from, I'm sorry, two places to get aqua water from. One is down this way and one's up here. So it's 300 feet to the site, but then we have to run it to the houses. The other way to do it is 500 feet this way and down Aubrey Ave. We may, you may tell us we have to go all the way down here, even if we came up from here. So we'd like permission for well water. What I'll do is, I can also go over the variances that are inherent in this project that are on the plan, so I didn't get to that yet.
Yeah, just to back up to the wells, have you talked to Montgomery County Health Department? Because I know there's a 100-foot isolation distance requirement from like onsite sewage, possibly from floodplains. So
Yes.
We, I mean, I would prefer to see public water here, but, you know, if you do get the okay from the county, I would reconsider it.
Yeah, they have setbacks from different features such as sewers and existing wells. So we have put in preliminary well locations on the plan. We've also put in stormwater, so we followed the code, Montgomery County code, as best as we can so far, but we also need to know really exactly where the well is here. There's also an issue of whether it's a pressure sewer line coming down this road and the setback from that, or gravity sewer. So we have a pretty good handle, but we don't have good data from the town on these houses yet. And if it's a pressure pipe that's pumping sewage, then we have a certain setback. So yes, we have reviewed with them the requirements. Now we have to go through the details. So thank you.
Do you feel that putting the wells in will not have a negative effect on, I guess, the buyers that would be interested in these? I would think that many buyers would be apprehensive about buying property with wells in today's world.
No, I don't feel that would negatively impact the property or the sale of the property. I feel more buyers are more comfortable with wells. Septic systems, as long as they're new, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, in your letter, you very specifically said the public water utility must be extended to service the development. Is there a franchise agreement in the township? I mean, it's kind of beyond our jurisdiction, or we don't usually get involved, it's this board and that kind of thing. It would seem to make sense to me that 300 feet is not a great distance for development with, you know, three or four developable lots. You know, I kind of echo what Lucy was saying. If something were to go wrong with those wells in five years and that person bought that property, what's the township going to do? Are they going to get involved? Are they going to be on the hook? I don't think they would be, but that property owner, as an individual extending water at that point, 300 feet could be a big deal for them. I mean, water that close, 300 feet isn't that far. It's just my thoughts on that.
Is there some feasibility issue related to using public waters rather than wells? Is it a cost factor? Why is that you're choosing to do one rather than the other? And is there, and do we have any, do we have any information from any of our township or other technical sources to tell us what we should be thinking about that? You can begin answering any part of it.
I can help answer it, but I'll let Mark start, because we did get estimates.
Right, your question was, is there any township feedback on?
Yeah, I'd like to know. The question is being asked, can we give some feedback on whether we think these wells are a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, there's not a standard within the subdivision land development ordinance for running public water. However, the practice in the time that I've been here is any development proposed, that's within 500 feet of a public water source, has extended that water service to supply their new development. We have that standard for sanitary source. If you're within 500 foot of a sanitary sewer main, you will extend it. In this case, the applicant has the ability to extend the public water supply down Robinson Avenue to a point along his frontage of the, I believe it's lot number three, the lot that fronts on Robinson. At that point, he has the ability to create an easement and run water laterals to service lots one and two without having to trench either Clearview or Aubrey Ave. So from the township staff perspective, you have the ability to supply public water to these homes. By the applicant's own admission, it's 300 feet away. Of course, if you create that easement, utility easement to service the water source for lots one and two, you have a portion of steep slope that you have to go through. Either that or you have to revise the side yard setback on lot number one to create the 20-foot easement. You've heard a statement earlier that it's a heavily wooded lot. Anytime you get into trenching for utilities, you're going to have tree disturbance, root disturbance. So, I mean, what you have in front of you, sir, is a sketch plan. It shows some topography numbers. It shows placement of houses and a floodplain line. You know, as you get farther along in this plan, it actually becomes a land development submission to you. Those utilities and that would be readily available to be reviewed. I think for tonight's meeting, the applicant's looking for some comments on his proposed driveway/ roadway in Robinson Avenue. I'm sure Kathy Mavis and some other board members can provide some comment on tree disturbance as to what you're seeing and how they would like to do an inventory of the trees. And, you know, if the board has an opinion on well water for this particular development. Other than that, we could talk about the floodplain or any other issue the board may want. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Kathy, I'm waiting for your comments.
For more comments? Well, I mean, on the landscaping of woodland, I mean, they definitely have to show compliance with the ordinance. There is some scrub growth on that property and some invasives, but there's also some fairly nice trees. I know it ties into the Township's Grove Park and the dog run, and, you know, there is a path down further on Washington into it. Right now, though, it's mostly littered along the front, but I've never walked, since it's private property, I've never walked totally on the site. But yeah, I would like to see more detailed on the trees, especially so close to the floodplain.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? All right, well, I think several of us have some concerns about well water instead of public water. We'd like to see the trees inventoried. Those are probably two of the main concerns we've heard here tonight. So those are recommendations I think I make for several of us. Is anyone else would like to offer some comment to those items?
I think you've captured my concern.
Okay. All right. All right, so we'll see you again in the future, we hope, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. And we'll be addressing zoning issues later with the zoning review letter, but they're on the plan, the potential zoning variances are on the plan that you have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in tonight.
Mr. Markman, can I just make a suggestion? Clear with us that we're getting good sound, because
Yeah, it's very echo, it keeps echoing, and it's difficult to hear what people are saying.
Yes.
Okay, our second agenda item tonight is, Mr. Markman will present BET Investments' Revised Development Plan. As many of you may recall, they came to us earlier this year and presented their plan for comment from the Planning Commission and from the public. So we'll be doing the same thing again tonight. So we'll start with Mr. Markman's presentation, and then we will open up for comments to everyone here. I will remind you that we do have this room until about 10 o'clock, and ask that everyone, respect everyone's time. So thank you for coming tonight, and, Mr. Mark, without further ado.
Thank you very much. I'm Michael Markman, president of BET Investments. You can hear me, obviously? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Procedurally, I just want to review where we've been and what we've done so far. We submitted a plan last year. We went in front of the Board of Commissioners. They made a motion with specific instructions to meet with the neighbors, meet with the Planning Commission, and try to alleviate what concerns we could and get comments from the various groups. We subsequently met with the neighbors in a televised meeting. There was something like 75 questions they asked us. We replied to those questions in writing. After that, we've had several individual neighbor meetings. We met with the Riddle Park people in the Riddle Park Auditorium and went over the plan. And then we came to you, and we presented a plan that reflected what we were working on. Through those meetings, which I think a total were probably about eight hours so far, we received feedback. Essentially, what we're doing now is trying to respond to the feedback we received with a new plan and try to do as much as we can to reply to the comments we've had so far. What we're looking for tonight is questions, concerns, comments from the board and the audience, and then hopefully, in the July meeting, a recommendation from the Planning Commission, you know, and what they think about it. So procedurally, that's where we stand right now, and that's where we're looking to go. So procedurally, that's where we stand right now, and that's where we're looking to go. So basically, what's different about this plan? One of the things that's changed that was dramatic, there was concern about traffic. One of the things that we're coming back and we're committed to doing, we've completed a traffic study to determine the impact, which we went over before. Currently, there is public money to improve the intersection that was gotten by the township through different grants. What we're agreeing to do tonight is to contribute $100,000 towards the matching contribution of the township for those grants. I think there's about $400,000 or $500,000 that have to be matched. We're here committing to $100,000 of that. The second thing we did is we decreased the curb cuts, but that's going on the next slide. As far as traffic, one of the other things we've done is we've reduced the plan from 225 units to 180 units. Through reducing it from 225 to 180, it's actually reduced the traffic coming off the site. As we mentioned before, and really, we look at peak hours. Currently, the YMCA, and we've said this before, you know, has peak hour traffic. Our use will have weekday morning, 195 less trips than are currently generated by the YMCA, and weekday afternoon, with this new plan with only 180 units, will have 179 less trips. So as you can see, this will have substantially less traffic during the peak hours, which is the concern, than currently are generated by the existing YMCA. If you look at this on a chart, this kind of shows basically, so originally, there's 231 right now coming off the YMCA in the AM. Our previous plan reduced that by 186, so there was 45 trips. Reduced it even more to 36 trips by 195. So it's almost a, it's a 75% reduction plus reduction in traffic. 224 trips in the afternoons. Our previous plan had 56. Now that there's less units, it has 45 trips. And the reason for this, with age-restricted units, the traffic is dispersed more through the day, that people that live in these types of developments try not to go in and out of the property during rush hour. Looking at the curb cuts, before, we had four different curb cuts. We revised the plan to basically have a right-in and right-out on Old York Road, which gives a larger distance between the right-in, the right-out, and the Susquehanna intersection to allow for an easier flow. The other thing, which, you know, we'll kind of get into the plan specifically, we actually have a ring road around the plan now. Before, it kind of used up the majority of the space, and it went under the buildings. Now, for fire trucks and for circulation, there is a ring road around the property. We have one curb cut now on Susquehanna, where before we had two, and that's a full movement curb cut on Susquehanna. So basically, and I guess, Matt, were you going to, let me, I'll go through this part. So as far as density, the density has been reduced substantially. So if you look at the number here, we originally were at 50 units to the acre. We're down now to 24, plus there's a density bonus provision that this plan shows 36. So additional 12 units provided, we do certain things that would be agreed upon with the township. Improvements to the projects, such as green roofs and other things, that would give us a density bonus, which would be a maximum of 36 units to the acre. Building coverage, which is the second one, our original plan, we previously proposed 75% building coverage. We've since reduced that to, excuse me, 50 units to the acre, 24, 75. We've since reduced that to 50% building coverage. Impervious, before, we had requested an 80% impervious surface. We were down to 70% impervious surface. Green area, before, we had 20% green area. We now have 30% green area. Before height, we actually had 65 feet. We've taken that down to 50, but if we're within 100 feet of a boundary of a residential neighborhood, we've taken that down to 40 feet. Looking at our previous plan, so if you want to look at this, this is actually very, very interesting as far as what's happening here. The current YMCA is this dark shaded area, and the current funeral home is this, this actually is a daycare for the YMCA, and this is a funeral home. So this is what exists there today, the dark shaded area. The plan that we had come in with previously is the purple area that's behind it, that covered a large part of the property. What we've done with the proposed plan is we've reduced the area that it covers, and we've separated into two buildings. There were some comments that people felt that the massing of the building was too large. So now we have a building here and a building here, and they've been separated into two separate and distinct buildings. If you can see, we're also under agreement to purchase this house here, which we would intend to demolish and create a pocket park or a landscaped area or whatever is desirable for the neighbors living on that road. We're open to whatever ideas. It will be green area. It would never be developed. There would be a deed restriction on it that say it would never be developed. So, I can't handle this. You know, the other thing I can just show, and Matt's going to take over from here, but, you know, if you look at the overall plan, and you can see, you know, the road, the road kind of winds through, and also the green areas here, so you can see, we've added, added green area, substantial green area to the property. But I'm going to let Matt Johnson, who's our architect, kind of take over from here.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? All right. So this slide speaks specifically to the building setbacks, which was previously a concern mentioned at these meetings. Some of what we're doing to address that is keeping a 15-foot setback off York Road, or a 15-foot setback from the right-of-way off York Road here, and then we actually have 25 feet along Susquehanna. What this allows for is a more generous streetscape. It also allows for us to keep some of the existing, and maintain some of the existing low Quaker walls that are along York Road, and then we would kind of extend the existing context and create a similar wall along Susquehanna. And we have a couple images of those later on. The side and rear yard setback, typical AO allows for a 30-foot setback. We're maintaining a 45-foot side and rear yard setback to the residential properties. And you can see, the 45-foot piece is right here. You can see that typically, our numbers are higher. We're at 87 here, 67 here, and 70 in this area here. We still are keeping the 25-foot setback from the cemetery, so it's just the residential properties where we're maintaining the greater setback. And as Michael mentioned, part of the ways that we achieve this is creating the driveway along the perimeter of the property, which allows us to set our building back further from the, from the neighbors. Again, as Michael mentioned, a typical AO height, or maximum height, would be about 40 feet. We are keeping to that 40 feet as long as we're within 100 feet of a residential property. So once we get more than 100 feet away from a residential property, that is when we would go to sort of an increased height, or maximum height of 50 feet. So you can see, in this area, where we're only 87 feet away, this is just one residential level, which is probably only 15 feet tall. Here, where we're only 67 feet away, this is just three residential levels, so again, less than 40 feet. But once we get more than 100 feet away, that's where we go up to that fourth story, where we get to 45, 46, 47 feet tall. This next slide are building sections that show essentially how many floors each building has, and how we're achieving the max heights that we're proposing. So as I said, we decreased our proposed height from 60 feet to 50 feet, and again, within 100 feet of the residential neighbors, we're going down to 40 feet. There were a couple moves we needed to make in order to achieve these heights. The most obvious one is we needed to provide fewer and smaller units, so we're just generally building less building. That allowed us to build fewer levels. So this section is through the building on, along Old York Road up here, and this building is actually only three stories above the parking. The parking will be mostly submerged, so this 39 foot nine is actually shorter than the existing, like, historical YMCA building that's on that property now. The second way where we attempted to decrease the height was to actually excavate the property more, so we could fully put, or so we could submerge our parking more below grade than we were proposing before. So this really comes into play along Susquehanna, where before, it appeared to be a five-story building on Susquehanna, because you had part of the level of parking plus four stories on top of it. Now, because we're fully submerging the parking in this area, it's just going to look like a four-story building on Susquehanna. So above grade on Susquehanna, we're only about 45 feet to the top of the roof. The third sort of move we made to decrease the building height was really just reconfiguring the plan, so it allowed us to decrease the building height as we got closer to the residential neighbors. So again, this calls into play the 40-foot within 100 feet of the neighbors, and then going up to 50 feet above that. You can see in this section here, this is kind of cut through this area. We have four stories along Susquehanna, and then we have our amenity deck here, and then we have four stories here, but as we get closer to the neighbors, we're just going down to a three-story building height. So the high portion of this building is about 47 feet here, and will be about, I guess it's probably about 35 feet as, at this part of the property, which we kind of looked at on the previous slide. Just comparing this to some of the context, along Old York Road and Susquehanna, we are proposing a max height of 50 feet for Abington Terrace. The existing Abington YMCA is about 45 feet tall. Sunrise of Abington, which is across the street on Susquehanna, is about 45 feet tall. Abington Hospital gets up to about 65 feet, and Lions Gate, the Penn State student housing, is about 55 feet. So the next slide that I'm showing has to do with the context and the buildings around our project. Before, the style of our building kind of took hues from Abington Hospital and local township buildings that had a lot of brick and then, like, light stone trim. It was more of an institutional look, and for the design of this building this time around, we wanted to do something that kind of called back to less institutional buildings and more residential historical-style buildings. So here, we're looking at pictures of the church across the street. Again, these are some of those low stone walls that we're proposing to add along our property. Here's a colonial farmhouse residential building that's associated, or residential-style building that's associated with the church. This is the old schoolhouse that's in front of Sunrise, and this is just a retail building up the street on York Road. Again, it's just more of the traditional farmhouse-style architecture. For our building, for our project this time around, we are proposing sort of a contemporary farmhouse architectural style, and you can kind of see this in the images where we're proposing, and these are just images that the style attempt to look like. So we're proposing pitched roofs in some areas. Obviously, we need to be cognizant of the overall building height, but then again, like, overhanging roofs, using more stone and traditional siding, as opposed to the brick institutional look that we had previously proposed. This next slide just shows, it shows some of the low walls along York Road. So these are the, these are the existing walls along York Road. We would attempt to maintain these as much as possible, and then, as I mentioned, we would also add to them along Susquehanna to kind of develop the character, the overall character of the project.
So as Matt said, we're going to work with the low walls. We're going to try to add them along the perimeter of the project, so that we maintain, and we weren't totally aware of the low Quaker walls that were mentioned in the last meeting that was helpful, and we're going to incorporate the stone into the building that'll help match some of the historical elements. As far as the cemetery, and I've spent a fair amount of time there now, there's an individual that, the church pays to restore it. The cemetery is a resource in the area that's not necessarily funded the way it should be. If you look at the gravestones, many of these gravestones are falling over. They don't have the, you know, the writing on is coming off from acid rain and various other things, and there are restoration techniques that can occur with the gravestones. The other thing is, obviously, the sidewalk around the cemetery is sunken, and it's a dangerous condition. So we're looking to do a number of things with the cemetery, and I live here, you know, it's funny, I've driven, I drive by it 30 times a week, and I've never looked in to see the condition of it, and now that I'm looking at it, and I've spent time there, I think it's a resource that needs to be protected. So what we're proposing, first of all, is to repair and restore the fence wherever necessary around the cemetery, paint it or restore it. I don't think you want to tear it down, because it is historical. The sidewalk around the cemetery, completely repair and replace it wherever necessary. It's mostly on Susquehanna Road where that needs to occur, and kind of work on that and make sure that that looks good. Then we intend to have our surveyor go and survey the gravestones, because the problem now is they're falling down. So what we would like to do is create a map of each and every gravestone, and there are historical figures that actually are buried there that are being lost forever. So our intention is to survey the gravestones and then have a map for it. Then the next thing, which we've talked about with the individual that kind of takes care of the cemetery, is we're willing to contribute and help raise money for a program with the high school, where we would take $5,000 a year, we'll commit to $25,000. We'll also commit to help raising money among businesses in township to basically create a program where students from the high school can come out, and it's kind of a STEM history combination, where they could help restore the writing on the gravestones, research the individuals, and it would take years to do, but research the individuals that are there and create a historical document that they can connect back to the, you know, the history of Abington. So we want to start that program. I've already got commitments from some of my tenants in my shopping center down the street to contribute to it, so we commit initially $25,000 and work with the individual to do that program. So essentially, then, you would have a survey of the cemetery, you would have each individual gravestone, and over time, hopefully, you could document the history of the people that were buried there, and it can be a historical document for the township. So it's something that we've, we've put a lot of thought in, and we would be absolutely committed to in the future. I think that's the last couple slides. So the good part with the lower number of units is there's a little less traffic. The bad part, there's a little less in taxes. So this is a revised chart. I had about $190,000 more a year in taxes generated for the schools and for the township. It's gone down to about $665,000 a year. So right now, the Y does not pay taxes. This will generate about $100,000 a year net to the township, and we have the numbers in the report, and $565,000 a year net to the schools, because it doesn't create any schoolchildren. No children would be allowed to live here, because it's 55 and older. This chart, which you have, is something that was put together by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, that just shows densities of apartment projects throughout the county, ranging from 23 units to the acre, and then you get up to kind of our level, which is like 33 here. Now, the interesting part is, age-restricted apartments generate less traffic. So what is density? Density is how many people live there. Density is how it contributes to the traffic, you know, what impact it has. These are a lot of the more recent projects, most of which were enacted through text amendments, very similar to what we're proposing, for different densities for apartment projects, ranging from an outrageously high 140 all the way down to 23.5, depending on the different locations. So this was just something that shows some of the different things that have gone on elsewhere in the county that's part of your package. And with that, I'd open up to any questions that anyone may have.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to open up first to the planning commission. Would anyone like to start off with a few comments? Would anyone like to start off with a few comments?
Sure. I have a comment. Last meeting, I think it wasn't so much a concern about the traffic, the, the number of cars, but I, I, there was a big concern about the older generation coming out of Susquehanna and I'm a little bit nervous that now that the, one of the exits and entries has been moved down the hill and I, just having made that left-hand turn, it's quite dangerous. Is there any, are you addressing that somehow or any, any thoughts on that?
How you doing? Peter Cleland with BET. None of our property frontage is really down the hill. We are certainly closer to the crest of the hill, which really affords a better sightline opportunity.
I apologize. I missed everything you just said.
Yes, as did I.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sure. Peter Cleland with BET. None of our property frontage is, is on the hill portion of Susquehanna. It is closer to the hill, which should afford a better sightline opportunity at that breakpoint as it comes down. I, I think what you're experiencing, and I don't know where you made your turn from.
It was Huntington coming out of Huntington Road.
Coming out of Huntington. Yeah. I think. Trying to see if we have the larger aerial that shows the configuration. So as you can hear, this slide is a little bit better. So when you're coming out of Huntington, you're getting closer to where the bend in the road occurs on Susquehanna, which is part of your site issue. So with where our driveway is located, we are further away. You have a much greater distance for that traffic.
Excuse me. Try moving back from the mic.
Okay. With where our proposed driveway is located, which is roughly in this area here, you have a much straighter section of road on Susquehanna for that site distance looking to your right. Where Huntington Road comes out, it almost immediately starts to curve, which I think is what your site distance issue is there at Huntington Road.
Excuse me. We'll open it up for public comments in a few minutes if you could wait and then we'll have you address everyone. Thank you.
So as far as the concerns about the driveways, we consolidated them, consolidated them to two locations as Michael had mentioned previously. We have just a right-in, right-out driveway on Old York Road and one single full movement access there on Susquehanna, which is frankly our furthest location that we can possibly get from Old York Road.
What's the grade at the Susquehanna Road entrance or exit? What is the grade at that point?
What kind of elevation? I mean, that, that section of Susquehanna Road is relatively flat through here. It's not until you get to roughly this point where this person's house is speaking behind me, where the grade starts to break down and go down Susquehanna.
And what would you say about the sightlines there?
I don't have them measured, but I mean, I'm sure that they would comply with PennDOT's requirements.
I mean, that was my main concern is out of Huntington Road, you probably have like 50 feet of sightline. I, I would think you'd want, I don't know what it is, but it's probably like 500 feet. I don't know how far up you are beyond that. You might be, you might be okay. I'm just hoping, I'm wondering if someone's looked into that for safety.
We will.
And when you come back to us, will you bring us some kind of photographic display of that?
Certainly.
Anyone else?
I'd like to wait till after the public speaks because I'm assuming they're going to bring up and have the questions answered. I will have.
Okay.
I have another question.
Okay, please.
I'm just curious, if you could explain a little bit more how the parking works. You mentioned that the, the previous height was 55, 60 feet or something in that range and this is lower. Did you decrease the floor-to-floor heights? I think you lowered the parking, so how does that work?
The parking's now underground.
Completely underground?
Mostly underground.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what this shows.
And, and does that mean, I guess it's mechanically vented? Like, I mean, there's no, most parking garages, you need some kind of venting, right?
Right. There's, there is underground parking in lots of locations and it would be vented according to building code.
Okay.
And in addition to that, we were able to lower the floor-to-floor of the garage because previously we had truck access underneath and through the garage, which we do not have in this plan because of the driveway that Michael mentioned earlier.
Yeah. And, and I like, I like the idea of the farmhouse contemporary look. One thing I think would be nice is to somehow avoid getting the big rooftop units, you know, visible. Like you can do that with this new style, I think, a little bit more easily, so.
Yeah, with the pitch roof, it's easier to hide the rooftop units.
Yeah, I was happy to hear that you have a plan in place for the cemetery, but I was curious, have you discussed that with the church that I assume are the stewards of that property?
So currently, there's an individual that, and, and part of it was his proposal that takes care of the cemetery. He's paid by the church. So it was his idea to set up a program to help, help. We're, you know, we're more than, he, he had conveyed to me that he had worked with the church and he's actually willing to come in and talk to the planning commission about it as well and that it was something that would be received very well because there's not enough funding right now to be able to take care of the cemetery the way that people would like to take care of it, so.
Yes, and I thought the his, having the students involved in learning the history of the, all the people that are buried in that cemetery and their importance in the township was a, a great idea. I just wanted to make sure that the church was weighing in on this.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of took my lead from him and he's paid by the church to take care of us and we'll further explore that with him and I, I'll have him come in next time if he was willing to.
Yes, thank you. All right, I think with that, we'll open it up to the public. If you could step up to the podium and, and give us your comments, we'd appreciate it.
I am Vice President of the Riddle Park Residents Association. I want to congratulate this situation with respect to the families of the cemetery who I'm sure all have grave concerns. I am not here to discuss traffic. I am not here to discuss water runoff or any of the, these type of situations. I was a Cheltenham Township Commissioner for 20 years, so I have seen a lot of development plans. I will tell you that this one is pretty good. However, in terms of Riddle Park, the potential is scary from a marketing standpoint. I'm not talking about traffic. I have no problem with Susquehanna Road becoming a toll road. I'm not talking about water runoff. I'm talking about marketing as it affects Riddle Park. Now, I'm not sure how important Riddle Park is to Abington and the members of the planning commission. By the way, congratulations for serving the township on the planning commission. However, we're going to have 180 or whatever it is luxury apartments with no down payment and monthly rents of approximately between $2,000 and $3,000 a month. Right down the street is Riddle Park. To even buy into Riddle Park, if you're a couple, the buy-ins are approximately $3,000 to $400,000 just to purchase a unit, after which the monthly for a couple will average about between $7,000 and $8,000 a month. Understandably, that includes some meals and that includes some healthcare. However, if you are talking from a marketing standpoint, and I spent most of my career as Senior Vice President of a large marketing agency in Philadelphia, the prospects for Riddle Park are scary. And if and when this project is approved and starts to sell its units, it will have a deleterious effect on the marketing efforts at Riddle Park and nobody knows how, how deleterious. But I have talked to the people in the marketing department there, they agree with me. They think the prospect is, I will use the word again, scary. And again, I'm not sure how important Riddle Park is in the minds of the planning commission or of the Abington Township, but I can assure you that this project will have a deleterious effect on Riddle Park.
All right, thank you. Would someone else like to approach the podium?
It's a very impressive project here we have. By the way, I have a crypt on Holy Sephora, I think I'm going to sell that because I want to go in the cemetery. Anyhow, my name is Antonio Schiavone, 1115 Riddle Road, corner of Riddle, Susquehanna and Valley Road. I looked on the plane, the original, the gentleman side, they showed the black area. It was the existing paved area, the existing building of Y with the new building that said Porpo and it looks like it's five times more surface unless this building is suspended by the air, it looks like it's going to have five times more cemented paved area. Every square, every square foot of paved area, each hour of rain, it costs 50 gallons of water. My house is on a corner of Riddle, Susquehanna and Valley Road. The water from Susquehanna east, the water, the water from Washington Lane, the water from Valley Road, the water all the way up this, this plane, the building, it come on a corner. My house is right after the bridge. If any one of you assist the water after the bridge, it's like a lightning. The water of the bridge, the velocity, it will kill her house down all the way to Delaware Avenue. I have a picture here of past years. I would like the commission to take a look, please. Once I submitted this picture a few years back, I applied to the county, I applied to the state, I applied to the EPA, they all agreed that the creek, the stream on my property from Valley Road to Susquehanna Road, it needs work. The township, six years ago, it spent money to have a plan, architectural plan for the job to be done. It was agreed in 2011, the Abington Township, they told me was no funds at the time to do the job. The year later, 2012, they said they didn't have enough money, but when I have to pay the tax, I go to the bank to pay the money. I have no children and I pay school tax too. This plan, it was agreed and it's six years that the township said they have no money. Anyhow, fortunate enough for the township, it's crazy for me, in 20, June 10 and 11 was big major storm. It was a wall of my property, it was a thick wall which it fell. It fell because the then engineer, chief engineer of the township, Mr. Power, he agreed to build a wall the opposite side of Tallahammer and the water, when it goes to the wall and there is 532 inches drained all from my property and that's why the wall collapsed. I called Timmy Clark, gently come and saw the damage. He referred to the township, to the new engineer, a lady by the name Emmy, and she said, the reply was, there no longer was in the township Eastman. I went to the manager three times personally. He was too busy to talk to me. I called three times. I have documented here. Nobody ever called me. It was a sign years ago, I've been on a beautiful place to live. It's a disgrace. At this point, with all respect to everyone who lives there, if we allow this monstrosity of building, my house is not worth anything. My house was a, was worth $700,000 eight years ago, $590,000 three years ago because of this damage, because the township allowed all this speculative lucrative business to grow up like a mushroom at expenses of the neighborhood. I've been going up worse than Cheltenham Township. It's now proud anymore. I was proud to be and I'm one for my house for sale for $590,000. I spent $20,000 on my property every year to build a nice landscaping because my wife and I, we have no children and we believe in children and we do a lot of raising money event, three to four times a year in our house to raise money for events and we lost $80,000 to $90,000 for abused children, for orphans, for people in Israel. We send money. And now we're going to create this, Esther Toll Brothers, they built, they built a complex on Wash Road and 63. They were all for sale. They were unable to sell, they went for rent and there's about 25, 30 units empty. There's only three, four miles away to do that. So you want to agree on that? God bless. It's good. It's good for the Toll Brothers, the billionaire Toll Brothers, but it's not good for us. It's not good for these people. We work hard. I pay $20,000 a year to keep a nice landscaping and now this is the wall, the last week it fell on my house. This was just last week and the new administration, the new administration tell me that it's now Eastman, when it is here, allowed, they told me it was no money. There is people who can witness this. There's people. If the job was down when it's supposed to be, I had the wall there in my property. If they come there, but are you on the flood zoning? No, we're not on the flood zoning. Mine shouldn't cancel me because I'm now on the flood zoning because the house is on top of the hill, but the property is down, but the wall keep down. If the, if the wall keep coming down, the house is going to come down. How the township assess the tax? By the value of the property. I'm an, I'm an inured student. I talk the way I was born on a farm. How the township value the tax of a property by the value of the house? If my house is less valued today than five years ago, maybe the township should give me a bonus. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you mind coming back to the microphone, Your Honor? Could the last speaker come back to the microphone for a moment? So the damages that you have showed us in these photographs relate to... relate to a flood or rain event that occurred in what year?
All the water from the neighbor, which four miles radio, four miles radio. If you go all the way on top of the house that the Toll Brother bought the new house on Sesquahana and Miringas Road, all the water from there, all the water from here, pretty much from the aspiral, from all this area, the area from Sesquahana, from 611, all the way up to Annantown Road, and all the way from the school, from Abington School, it all come to my property. It all come, all convey on the bridge, all convey on the bridge. There is three huge, huge, I don't know how you call that, water drainage. They go on the Valley Road, they go all the way around. There is three huge right after the bridge in my property. Right after the bridge. Two are from the Valley Road area, one it's from my property, which collect the water from Riddle Road and Sesquahana Road. And two are right next, right outside. Right, I don't know why they allowed to do two huge drainage right outside the bridge before the water going the bridge. I understand the three on my property because the, after about 15, maybe after 25, 30 feet, the creek is wide a little bit, no, it wide. But right under the bridge, right after the bridge, the wall, they're about maybe 18, 20 inches wider than the bridge. But the velocity of the water of the bridge, because whenever they did the bridge 25, 30 years ago, they did not fall the verse of the creek, they did in diagonal. So the wall the way it come, it come straight on my property.
Okay, so you're saying though, at some point in time, the township had made a study of the hydraulic or-
Of the problem, yes, that's correct.
And at some point, you said they were prepared to go forward and try to remediate your problem?
With approval of the EPA, the county, and the state. And it's a plane, I have a plane here, I have a plane.
So are you saying to me they had an approved plan, but they just did not fund it? I-
This is the plane.
Okay, okay. So what I'm trying to get at is whether there's anyone from an engineering point of view who can speak to whether the proposed development by-
Those days-
Abington Terrace would have any impact on the dynamics that affect the water flow on your property? Has anyone looked at that?
If the job was done as is on the plane, seven years ago, that would prevent partially. Because, gentlemen, ladies, there is no such things you prevent water. There is two things in the world, not preventable and nonstopable. It's water and terrorism. You cannot prevent the water, you cannot prevent or stop the water. You can, you can prevent, you can stop the fire, but you cannot stop the water because you can wash the way down the shore. So if the township, yes, to answer your directly, if the township was doing the job as per plan, it would prevent partially, partially. But additionally, because the relationship, it's scary to say, because of the relationship between Mr. Power, Jack Tallahammer, who lives across the street from me, they built this wall, this cement wall. Now the water, as it bounces on the wall of the cement, it come to me, eroded the bottom, it eroded the base of the wall that was there for 100, 100 years. It eroded the wall and it collapsed, and my property collapsed.
Now are you still living at that same property today?
I beg your pardon?
Are you still residing at that same property today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and have you recently, when is the last time you had somebody come in and look at what would remedy or prevent this thing from happening again?
I was not aware of the change of administration in the township of Mr. Power and Mr. Matteo. So I know that in the past, Mr. Clark, I believe, Mr. Tim Clark, is one of the engineer of the township. I called him and he came to see the damage last week. And he said, well, I'm going to present this to the new engineer, Amy, whatever her name is. And he called me, said, unfortunately, I have bad news. It's not responsibility of the township because it's a new property. I know it's on my property, but it's a stream. My stream is on my property. My stream collect all the water from all the neighborhood.
Had you had an attorney or an engineer come in and address their conclusion to see if they agreed with the fact that it is not a township response?
No, that, no, I didn't, no, the township-
Okay, one last series of questions. I'm trying to determine whether or not the problem that you have and have experienced would be adversely affected in any way by this Abington Terrace project. Is there, can you offer any insight into that?
From this-
Mr. Markman, could you respond to that at all?
Oh my God, where the water is going to go? You tell me where the water is going to go. Even if they do this underground drainage, it's bullshit. It doesn't work, because things doesn't work. The ground, the soil, it's a mineral, it's like a sponge. Once it's saturated, the water has to go somewhere. You know, the water, where they're going to go? They're going to five, five times. You know what, gentlemen? You allow him to do, I would buy the Y. I will do an educational center on the Y, educational center for teens, instead to have this monstrosity of building there.
Can the engineers from the Abington Terrace comment at all?
I beg your pardon?
I want to hear the developers-
We'll have the Abitkins comment.
Thank you.
One thing, water and terrorism, they are not preventable, they are not stopable.
So we did not talk about stormwater today. We did discuss that at our previous meeting. And Michael is trying to bring up the slide. So despite what you heard from the gentleman from Riddle Park last time and what you're hearing from this gentleman today, the water from the YMCA property does not go down Sesquahana towards Valley Road today. It's all collected in the parking lot. It is piped around the western side of the YMCA and out to York Road, down York Road, and then it crosses over and goes to the Tuckney Creek. So while our proposal will install stormwater facilities that do not exist today on the YMCA as far as control and reduction, we will be required to comply with the township ordinances as it relates to stormwater reduction and controls. However, that will not have a positive or negative impact to his particular problem because our water does not go that direction.
And you've studied that carefully?
Please.
All right. Good evening, my name is Aaron Gross. I'm a resident of Abington Township since 2009. Married a family, has been here for many years. I have many families that, and friends that have been here from the beginning of time of Abington. Thank you, BET, for your concern, your allegiance to the youth of Abington in trying to propose additional money invested into the cemetery. I think that's a great idea. It's relevant since we're in the senior high school tonight. The fact that you're proposing a senior center next to the cemetery is kind of ironic in that point of moving mom and dad into a senior home and then future arrangements next door. My question tonight kind of tailors on to the previous speaker on can you do better? We can agree that this is a very vital and very important and to a heart property. You've increased, you made some great improvements from the first proposal, decreased greatly the number of attendance, but only 10% were you affected to the green space. Was it 25 to 35%? You can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was the number projected. And towards the water runoff, the impermeable surface from 10% as well, from 80% to down to 70% of the impervial service. Okay, green area, is that 20, yeah, 20 to 30%. Can you do better? That's my question. Can you do better? It will cost more, but be the first in Abington to go to that 50% to be more greener, to have the effect of surrounding neighbors of the water and your surrounding environment?
Is there a response to that, Mr. Markman?
I think at the end we'll give you a few minutes to respond in general.
Hi, Van Hellersley, 1047 Huntington Road. I'd like to reiterate the fact that the zoning ordinance was just updated in 2017. And within this ordinance, we have standards, right? And I understand that this BET proposal has been revised and we talk about these numbers looking better. But let's remind ourselves of what the standard is currently. And what the standard requires is that there be limited in terms of building lot size and impervious space and green space. And so relative to the standard, the revised proposal by BET constitutes a 100% increase in building lot size, a 16% increase in impervious space, and a 25% reduction in green space relative to the current standard. And I'm just going to conclude with a rhetorical question, really for the leaders of our community. What will it take? What will it take for you to meet the unmet need of a community service institution with the removal of the Abington YMCA? What will it take? Consider that, thank you.
Could I ask you to repeat that question so we could hear it?
Your last question.
Your rhetorical question.
What will it take for you to meet the unmet need of a community service building institution that has now been removed because of the loss of the Abington YMCA? Right, the loss of the Abington YMCA constitutes an unmet need. What will it take as leaders of our community for you to be committed to reestablishing a community service institution?
Hello, my name is Susan Khan Odner. I live at 1349 Warner Road, near the Meadowbrook train station area. And speaking as a retired person in my 70s and a graduate of Abington High School, I do not want the zoning change to allow a very dense four-story building with very, like, with increased impervious cement type surfaces that will impede drainage. The intersection is not a good, it's not a good place for seniors anyway. It's a very highly trafficked, extremely busy intersection. And I guess I'm getting to be a senior. So I'm looking at things a little differently. I, commissioners, please listen to us residents and voters and neighbors who do not want a high-rise, four-story building. I know some of it's going to be three stories, but it's still extremely dense and a high-rise building in an area where we're used to seeing the Y. If, if you must develop the area, allow fewer units, in other words, rather than 180 already, say 100, and have three-story building with much more green space along Old York Road and along Sesquahana. I'm looking at the row of trees. I guess that's Old York Road in the front there. There just needs to be more green space rather than less to enhance the character of our neighborhood and our town. There seems to be less and less green space available because of various buildings. And if there were more green space, it would assist in people who have flooding problems too. And that, that would help a lot. Please consider this to make it, to have a new proposal with even fewer apartments. That would be very helpful and would allow changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Bethany Lippa. I reside at 1056 Huntington Road in Abington, literally in the armpit of the proposed development. So that corner below the rainbow. On February 8th, 2018, I sent an email to the board commissioners to tour, inviting them to tour our backyards in our neighborhoods located right behind the current YMCA. The following Sunday on February 11th, Commissioners Brodsky and Thompson and Rothman joined a handful of neighbors on a rainy day to tour our backyards. They took time out of their busy schedules, thank you. They wanted to see how a high-density development could potentially look from our perspectives. And additionally, how it could open up future opportunities for development in the township of Abington. We voiced our concerns about zoning, building height, safety, traffic, and water, since on this particular day, our backyards were completely saturated with rain. To this day, I still have remnants of deep footprints embedded in my lawn from our backyard tour. This tour may have provided a visual of our neighborhood layout, but it's really difficult to capture the character and the soul of a neighborhood during a 30-minute tour. I will do my best to describe my experience as Abington tonight. My family chose Abington, specifically Huntington Road, as our first home due to its charm, safety, excellent schools, and proximity to work. We immediately began to grow our family and develop relationships with our neighbors. I never anticipated that our beautiful homes would be viewed as parcels to be bought, maybe demolished for profit, or ponds for density bonuses. I consider our neighbors to be friends and some as close as family. We're hard-working parents and spouses, loyal grandparents, and more recently, new families making a fresh start in our first home. Not all of us are able to relocate and leave this mess of a development simply because we have ties to employment, to the school system, and for one of our neighbors in particular, to very specialized health care for his two daughters. Though some of us have considered leaving at one point or another over the past six months, our sense of community draws us to stay. We support one another in countless ways within our neighborhood, whether it's a kind word for Andrea and Donville, our immediate neighbors who live at 1052 Huntington Road, who couldn't be here tonight, but after their house fire in June of 2017, they needed our support. Or cooking and delivering a homemade meal for new parents Emily and Brian who live at 1062 Huntington Road on the other side of us, whose beautiful home may be demolished, maybe not, because they are the vulnerable unlucky ones to live closest to the property line of the potential new development. Or whether it's taking a quiet moment after a 14-hour long workday to appreciate the beauty of Don and Kathy's stunning gardens on 1805 Brook Road. Or spending an evening of live music at Chris and Heidi's home at 1092 Huntington Road and learning about a book that Chris co- and learning about a book that Chris co-authored on the history of American-made violins. Or seeing Steve Lee of 1073 Huntington Road and a handful of other neighbors at a milestone birthday for my son and cherishing this backyard get-together as one of the few truly happy neighborhood moments since learning about this project back in January. Or sitting with Van Hellerslea in my home after being burglarized in 2016, Van keeping me company until I'm comfortable being home alone after dark with the kids, and feeling really grateful to have a friend and a neighbor who literally lives across the street at 1047 Huntington Road. Or being grateful for Van's mother, who my children lovingly call Grandma Papa, for providing emergency childcare at 6:00 in the morning when mandatory work meetings pop up, because we all know it's really important to have a village on our side. Or having the privilege of Hudson March, who lives around the corner at 1779 Brook Road, teach my kids music lessons every week for the past year in the same home, our home, where his grandparents Judge Reed and Diane Reed raise their family. Or whether it's spending time with Amanda of 1055 Huntington Road and appreciating her words of wisdom during Broad Street Run training sessions and admiring the fact that she can always find the best in each person and in every situation. Is it possible to sum up a place that you love in three minutes? I don't think so. Commissioners, please do the right thing and protect our residents, our quality of lives, safety, and the cohesiveness of our neighborhoods, and especially the charm of Abington Township, by upholding the 2017 zoning ordinance. BET and Mr. Markman, please do not pick off our homes one by one and disrupt the cohesiveness of our neighborhoods. Please do not demolish Emily and Brian's beautiful home. And please be very sensitive to the fact that that cut-through road is in close proximity to our playground. Listen to the kind words of Mr. Cooper on the planning commission, who really heard our objections loud and clear back in April at our last meeting. We are just as vehement about these objections now as we were two months ago. Please uphold the zoning ordinances. They were put in place for a reason by a group of very intelligent individuals. Commissioners, thank you for hearing our perspectives today. And if you'd like to tour our neighborhood, you can usually find me on the weekends pulling weeds in my garden, weeding my neighbors' gardens, because yes, I actually like to pull weeds very much. And my neighbors can vouch for me today. You're always invited to come by and say hello. I promise I won't put you to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Walter Draven. I've lived in Abington Township for 38 years. And this project requires significant zoning changes in order to be allowed. That's one of the principal issues here. Are we going to just change the zoning to, you know, to insert something in here that's enormous? It changes dramatically the character of the neighborhood behind it, as the young lady just said before me. It is located in, at one of our most dangerous intersections, which is not really a safe place for seniors. The seniors also will have a long walk to get to any shopping. It's not right next to a shopping center. The project will impact drainage to properties around it. We're not really sure. The developer says one thing. Mr. Givoni was extremely worried about this project. Has a drainage, has a drainage plan been submitted? Apparently there's some information about it, but I don't know if there's an actual plan in place. It's just plain that this project is wrong, especially at this location. Why would Mr. Markman be given property rights that take away the property rights of others in the area? Also, is there adequate room for fire trucks on their site design? It didn't seem like there was the last time at all. Has the fire department had a chance to review the plans to see that their equipment has adequate room to operate? This is a four-story building, so they're going to need big trucks. We already have a large apartment complex with many amenities. It seems to be having trouble filling up over at the former Colonnade that's now 100 York. Why not just direct our seniors there? They seem to have lots of amenities. At least I hear they do. So as with other people that spoke, please listen to the people who elected you. Where are the throngs of voters begging to allow this? I haven't seen them tonight. And why would you allow other places in Abington to be affected where residents have no say? This, this type of project could be built in some other place. I don't know that that's been totally analyzed, but there are places where people could buy up homes, make a big-sized piece of land like this, and stick another one of these things there. So once you change the zoning, the zoning is available to anybody. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Gibson. I live at 1079 Huntington Road. Can you hear me? Because I hear that echo too. Is that better?
That's better.
Better? Okay. There's a couple of issues that I wanted to bring up. First of all, the pocket park zoning. I understand it's zoned AO. I have some concern about that. I understand that, you know, Mr. Markman has said that nothing will be put upon that place. When Penn State Abington decided they were going to put a dorm in down the street, and when Riddle Park decided they were going to put in the Riddle Waters in the back, we received letters from those establishments asking us to a meeting. We've received no such letters from Mr. Markman or BET. So I really do not feel like, you know, I'm not really sure that, that that's, he has anyone's best interest in, and, you know, especially ours in mind other than theirs. My other second issue is traffic coming onto Huntington Road. You know, traffic will come out onto Susquehanna making a right. I'm going to tell you, being that age, because I have a mother who is that age, no one's going to make a left onto Huntington or onto Susquehanna. What's going to happen is if they want to make a, go south on Susqueh- on 611, they're going to make a right onto Susquehanna and then a right onto Huntington Road, which then takes you out to 611 to the light, which is going to be much safer. That's going to increase the traffic on our street. Third thing is, we had requested at the last meeting that we see an elevation from the neighbors' backyards. I do not see that. Fourth thing, and this is just my opinion for me, I love my home. We moved into our house and we specifically did not sell our original home first because we wanted to make sure that where we were moving was where we were going to stay for the rest of our lives. As I've told people, they will take me out in a body bag because I love my home that much. I have been asked if I want to move, and the answer is no. You know, I will be looking at the structure. I'm concerned about the lights. I'm concerned about the density. I am concerned about the water. I understand that, you know, Mr. Markman does not feel that that's going to be an issue. However, our home sits down from the road to begin with. We get water every time it rains, and we have two sump pumps. So these are the concerns that I have for myself, for our street. We have a lovely neighborhood and everyone is very close. You know, and I really hate to see that disappear. You know, as it is, there will be one less home if this thing goes through. And, you know, that's a shame for the neighborhood. It's already starting to change. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Heidi Germain. I live at 1092 Huntington Road on the corner of Susquehanna and Huntington Road. Appreciate you all being here tonight. So I spoke at the last meeting at the end, and I appreciate the inclusion of the historical walls, which I was very concerned about. I'm not too sure about the graveyard. I always kind of feel like graveyards are to be left alone. But I don't see any photographs of my backyard or my neighbors' backyards that border this property. I did not meet with Mr. Markman. My husband met with him. I'm not real sure how long that was. It was in our home. He was offered money. And that our house too would be ripped down. So I like some of the architectural changes you've made. I like the rock walls. That's good. This road is new.
So I would like some answers regarding what the little boxes are. Is that a wall? A concrete wall on the side of the road? That borders our land? And then are there lights that are going to light up? Are the lights on? The exit on Susquehanna, we don't turn left out of our driveway. You have to back out very carefully and go down the Nook Hill, which is what it's called, or cut through Huntington Road over to the light on your car for safety. Also, it wasn't mentioned that the entrance to Sunrise is not far from the entrance to this building. It's actually in between a couple of trees, what, 30 yards to the left? And then the Huntington Road crosses over, as I said, and I apologize if it's getting out, is right across from my house. That's a very dangerous area. There is traffic that passes a few times a day. I understand that you say there won't be as much traffic from the Y. What about incoming, like FedEx, deliveries, the mail, UPS? This is for 55-year-olds, so I'm not quite sure. Like you say, these people are going to stay home. Maybe because that's not really the case. So if someone had addressed this road as my first problem, I'm still not satisfied. Still don't like it. That whole strip is mine part. So I would like to know what those little boxes are. Why, there's a road now that runs along our neighborhood. How is it going to be lit? And what exactly are you going to do with that entrance? There's no stoplight on either of these Huntington Sunrise or this Virginia Coast Road. Thank you.
Just a thought, I think the boxes you're referring to are outside the parking. That is not underground.
So that's like a parking lot against yard? So there's cars against our yards? The whole way around?
Well, if Mr. Markman would address some of these comments in a few minutes.
That's good.
My name is June Bigly. I've lived 58 years on Sula Lane, just off of Susquehanna Hill. And my big concern is the aesthetics. What is going to be on the coloring of this one's property? Because it doesn't look like it's going to fit into the character of the area. And I feel very concerned that the people that are on the backside, their homes are going to be affected by this because it doesn't look like it's going to be very attractive. So I'm waiting for a little more B. So that I, a little ahead. I'm always so hesitant about this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Miss Amanda Lauer. I'm at 1055 Huntington Road. I just have a series of questions, mostly related to the new park. So the refer to the house that's being demolished on our street. My first question is, can it retain residential zoning? Why make a difference only on an entire residential street AO? If it's a park, is there a designation to keep it residential? My second question is, what percentage of the green space increase of the entire property? Is it attributable to the new pocket park in our neighborhood? How long are we cared for? Can it designate it non-smoking? How is it accessible? Is it accessible to our neighborhood? Or is it accessible to the residents? There's this deep hill between the current land property and where our house is now. It's a little bit of a step fill. How, how long people get to the park from the heavens? It looks like the aesthetics is not on the picture, but it's a little challenging to tell. On the new road that goes through everyone's backyard, I don't know if anybody saw, but that might be the cut-through road for people going 611 North trainway to Susquehanna if they're living on the light at Susquehanna. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for the residents of the community, the incumbent community, if there's some sort of gate or something to stop people from cutting through the back of that property, which does border closely like that in this yard. And then finally, after the last meeting, we couldn't find whether there were any planning mission or township funds available. So if there were any, if there were any comments available from the last meeting, we didn't have a chance to see them before this meeting. So we're hopeful they'll be available before the next meeting. In my last comment. Thanks.
Mark, can you pass through to the meeting's agenda?
Sorry, the minutes from the prior meeting are available to the public. They're online. If you remember, it wasn't a formal recommendation from the board, where there's a recommendation sheet, strictly just comments in the planning commission. They're included in the minutes of the last meeting that are online.
And that would be basically tonight's meeting. So the minutes will be online and be available to everyone. Again, this is, we're not making a formal recommendations.
My name is Erica Bassich. I live at 1016 Holly Tree Road. I got that on Baker Creek, which he took on a creek. I learned all about that. My daughter's a junior, and she went and signed my internship. So that's awesome. I would ask that the board not write the variance project. I can't really, and I'm not a science expert, how water can be adequately managed for this size project, for this variance. So last week, we had an old guy find mold in our left in our basement where my babies hang out. My neighbor, just to put a small deck on this property, went through giant water containment things on this property. And my other neighbor has a tree that used to come down and at no point during the winter did the land get hard enough for them to bring trucks in the back of the property to take down a tree. So if all of this water is going to Tucker Creek, that's where it's going. And we already have a lot of water that we're intending on. So I don't think it's a responsible bare hands. Thank you.
My name is Drew Hellerslea. I live at 1027 Huntington Road. I'm going to read a couple of things on behalf of the people. Diane Newey, wife of Judge, federal judge Newey. She's not here today, but she was participating here. She writes, I find this whole town, BET's project, I really cannot believe it's even on the consideration. In addition to my search, I posted my last email to you, which by the way, you did not answer. My conclusion to a technical plan is that in addition to feeling that the entire project is essential planning to cannibalize the residential side of Huntington Road neighborhood. I hear you want to survive. I was bought a true-making property. Since when can the developer cover our residential property to comply with AO? Since when can developer cover our residential property to comply with AO zoning? That was mentioned earlier, which is, is that an access road you're planning on this outside of the property to exit on Huntington Road? My husband is a medical here, recovering from a fracture hip, severely limited by my heart, but I cannot get this out of my mind. Knowing how I feel so involved as it is my neighborhood, I lived there for eighty-two years. I know commissioners are ruled by attached, coming in with the statement that money, money can buy zoning changes and variances which were originally designed to protect neighbors? Also, if they are green requirements, how can this project fulfill them in any way? I hope you convince some other commissioners that this is disas, this president disas, this is specifically addressed to Commissioner Sanchez. This is from Herb McMahon and all of our dear neighbors on Huntington Road. Planning mission, one of the most important thoughts I'd like to express is that we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get the use of this land in part. There will be no dual orders for revenue development after we have seen this a wrong fit in this location and that under your old, your old homes into under your area containing due to two and a half to three years of heavy construction while the area is due to a fact of water runs down the hill. Mr. Markman and everyone at BT were fully aware of their zoning with the IMCA when encouraged it. And they have taken the precedent of actions to write their own text amendment, not only to rezone the nature AR, but to redefine this township's own newly written zoning laws by writing their own. Instead of developing the man as Arthur and C.S. Green has led them to a decision that their grievance more important than the community's vehement opposition to your project, as you hear tonight from M.M. The current zoning codes were reasonably thoughtful and reverberant, consistent with the protection of the community. I'm tired of hearing about the potential tax revenue that this project may threaten. It is in no way, it in, it in no way makes up for the density issues of the area, the potential harm to the neighborhood, under your old houses and flooding and three years of heavy construction. Also, the serious concerns are people who's in Huntington Road who cut through to six eleven, where everyone's going south on six eleven, where anyone have control exiting on the north side of the development due to congestion. Traffic through six eleven and Susskohana is already congested with several blocks for a deep alley. I'm also tired of hearing this as a foregone conclusion. This is just a pro-cold zone. You, as commissioners, can easily say now, BT has no way of proving their case immediately to change zoning other than their grievance. Their proposed basic unprecedented and unacceptable will open the door for many other developers to rewrite their own zoning codes. The president will accept at that end. Why have zoning codes at all if they can be rewritten on within a mission? Let that sink in for a moment. Will this president's exposed township to be sued by anyone who's denied something similar in the future? I would urge all planning commissioners to review page eight, eight page petition that was submitted to planning mission. It carefully outlines how the project is inconsistent with a township's comprehensive plan that was last updated in two thousand seven and the zoning guidelines that was updated in two thousand seventeen and the old road revitalization study. The eight page petition is an extremely thoughtful document in terms of expression, expressing the community's opposition as to use your proposed text amendment. Once again, you have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get the use of this in any way. So if you're consistent with the current zoning, if you're not checked out, I just don't, residents who are so eloquently and vehemently expressive disdain this project and extremely valid and objective concern likely is the association of entire community due to density issues and rewriting, rewriting zoning code. Just on a personal level, I'm the coach, head coach of my son's soccer team. I mean, I had coached for a couple of years. Prior to that, I was an assistant coach for local community club. And we are trying really hard to serve underprivileged kids in the Adam and Community. And I'm a member of the board of the soccer club. And almost every morning, we are so frustrated with lack of recreational space for kids, whether it's soccer field or basketball or, or any other sport they enjoy. And what would you say as commissioners and the board commissioners to underprivileged kids, you would say, where's their Y? What happened? Just, I just want you to think about that. Would you be able to look these underprivileged kids in their eyes and say, sorry, we built, we have to build luxury style apartments where people can afford it, not for your parents? And I don't want to hear an excuse if they go to the new Y because I know I've taken that for granted, that we have two cars. Many underprivileged families in Adam don't have cars. And it's, it's a, it would be a hassle for them to take several buses to get to your Y. I just want you to think about that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe O'Keefe. I live at nineteen twenty-seven Susskohana Road, just a little bit up the road from about five houses cross over road. When I saw these revised plans, I said, congratulations, BT. This was a revision. The last meeting wasn't. This was a definite revision and it was a improvement, but not enough. What it have in that order is too much. It's not what we need. But my main point that I'd like to bring up has to do with foot traffic you're not considering, pedestrians. Maybe traffic will go down on the streets, I don't think so. But pedestrian traffic will go up because you're gonna have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty units, maybe two people per unit. They're gonna wanna walk. You're suggesting that to local improve that sidewalk alongside the cemetery? You can't straight. I've walked that sidewalk many times. One of the things I'm going to miss is my very, very usual walks to the Y. I'm probably one of the few people that use that sidewalk. Outside, people coming by bus from Philadelphia elsewhere to go to the Y. They're not gonna be able to do that anymore. You can flatten that sidewalk. You can make it just perfectly horizontal, so you can walk on it. You can't widen it. Two people walking across fill out that sidewalk. If someone were coming the other way with a wheelchair, I'd say, where are other people going to move? Onto Susskohana, which is very busy. There is no safe place to cross Susskohana to get to the other side. I know, I've done it many times, it's not safe. You can't walk down that sidewalk in the wintertime if it's not snow or if it's icy. Trying to cross the traffic time as been described to you, you're taking a chance. There's no light to cross by. Only light you can get to is the one on Susskohana on the old York Road. You gotta walk down that road. Sure, you go behind the building, but that makes it traffic, that makes your travel a little longer. That monument on the corner, that right-hand mirror there, that trots me. You can actually get a run over when you go over that mirror. Before you consider this, take care of that corner, get those plans finalized, so it's safe for everybody who's here now. Then maybe if you consider this, although I still think this is a good idea, but you've gotta work on that sidewalk. You can't make it wider. You can't make it streamlined. You can't increase the density of the population living here. It's a mistake. And once it's put up, you can't take it down. Look at that architectural rent. Look at those trees along the road. What are they growing up? The concrete? There's, it's not widening. There should be widening a little bit more. I like it widened a lot more. A lot more says that. That's all I can say. Thank you.
We kind of talked about the earlier minutes, a little less at this point, but so I would invite anybody who has something to say that, as I'm already said, to come up to the podium. I'm head on my turn around, I would just to more want to address some of the comments from the public.
My name is Tom Stone. I live at fifteen hundred five, I will live in Rye. I'm also president of the Rye Civic Association. The Civic Association has discussed this at last, at last few meetings. In fact, I managed, was able to come to our meeting and express our concerns. We also contacted Mr. Markman, but due to some weather conditions, we had to cancel a couple meetings, who was unable to attend, because they didn't have a meeting. I will say, when we discussed this, it's been pretty early on. We like my background, my taxes, the fact that, by the way, I do get this appropriation of my people, and the new people. We all would like to see lower taxes, which is certainly a lot of the tax burden. I like what was said about the cemetery, I think that's very good. I do know people who are older who would like to stay in the community. I think to suggest that this be used in economic fashion. Having said, listen to everyone here tonight, I just want to take a second, if I can, to agree to the issue of what I want to promote the Civic Association. Promote the best interest of the general welfare of, why don't I have, of the Abington Township. Protect the public health, safety and the primary rights of our citizens. Advocate the health of our neighbors and our community. Listen to the concerns that people have on the community tonight. I am very sympathetic to some of their concerns. I would simply ask the board that if you don't give exceptions to the zoning code, if you don't do that, it actually adds a lot of economic value to this property that would not be there with the current zoning code. By giving very much, you are adding economic value to private interests. I would ask you to make sure to do something like that. It has the generous support of the neighbors that are affected. That's all of the remarks on the current. Your comments, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take a crap, I would get a few, going through some of the comments we heard tonight and just to consolidate things a little bit, we've had many people concerned about side lines of traffic on Susskohana, the intersection of Susskohana and six eleven, the high light building, many people concerned about stormwater management issues that are not on the site, a lot of questions about that pocket park, the green space there. They've outlined details on that hour, people have access to that hour. Lighting is a concern for people in the neighborhood, particularly right around buildings. As architects were concerned, more details about how cut through the road inside the site were asked. So those are some of the concerns that we heard tonight. Two more people from the audience, and we'll turn to Mr. Markman.
Thank you very much. My name is Tyra Narin from Alas. My question, I think from my currently overbused post-website online, my question is, what if any accessory uses are proposed for this desert?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
It's a little more so, what if any proposed accessory uses are for this desert?
Proposed accessory uses?
Yes. No? Thank you.
Who do you think might get to that in two minutes, I want to thank everybody on the High Line Commission for her service, her volunteering, everybody we appreciate, respect. I have given the township to firemen and firemen for your community, so thank you so many for your services. Our firemen house is a building right out of the line, we've been anyway, right, accessory use. I did pass this question, first of all, what's the interior square footage?
Two hundred to eighty-five thousand.
Okay. So I did see a pretty dispute a day that they're not willing to be doing on the building, and I'd like to know why. I actually have a really good right now with the cost of discovering the renovations because, and the one, they are members of the US Steel Building Council, and they're your architects, as soon as they are. It could also be a dumb dumb view, but I'll tell you the cost, I don't really think it would be. I mean, I can tell you, but I'd like to go on, and you can address that later, so I don't wanna hold on there. But I am concerned about green features. Would you guys be able to come to, our mayor's house would want you to come, would you be willing to come and discuss with us? Because there's, and not necessarily has to be leave, there's actually works by anything such as pass that house, and that's a better, and I don't want my questions, because we can screw that in any ways, it's boring business. But my last question is, do the board commissioners, did they ever approve anything that you guys don't approve of a percentage of the time? You guys said no on this right right now, as it is. And you know, do you have to make a decision at the next meeting?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I'm slowly, I'm very, I'm sorry.
How often do the board of commissioners, who's ultimately have the final say, approve something if you guys prefer?
Not really.
Okay. So that means you guys are pretty much a J P bird in many ways?
Well, we're here to make your recommendations.
I mean, you're advisors, I just didn't, okay. So, so, you know, I am concerned about the changes that's being proposed, because especially we have a process that you guys, especially on recently about stakehold involved in zoning rerouting. And now it's become a core of this is a change. You know, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Markman, I'd like to have you hear my work and address all the comments you heard from the public tonight.
So obviously, the traffic issue is, as far as red rangers from the street, you've taken pictures, you haven't finished the architecture yet, but then we'll be presented in the next meeting, the red ranger for the highway in the streets. As far as the pocket park, I honestly never thought that could be construed as a negative. I guess it can be construed as a negative. All we're proposing is no access from our property to the pocket park. That is solely for the residents on that street, have additional green area on the street. That's all. No access from the property, no status, nothing. Just tear their house, landscape made of land, it's a nuisance to the neighbors. That's a negative. I, I, I mean, I've been doing this for many, many years, I've never seen, creating green space is being a negative. I just, and as far as the fact that it's never to be used, we will de-restrict it, so we can never, nothing can ever be built on that property for eternity. I'm an attorney, de-restrictions are de-restrictions. We will de-restrict it. It'll be an amenity for the street. I apologize, I did, I did leave with the quarter of property, and I thought that property had, there was some impact to that property, and actually, I talked to him about potentially purchasing the house. He asked me, I was interested in purchasing the house, and we didn't come up with any kind of agreement. These two properties, I think, you know, obviously, we have is there, and I just try to assess the impact of, of the development. As far as the cut through, this is kind of a winding way, we will do whatever traffic problem is necessary to make sure that there's not cut throughs through the property to do that. As far as the height, we've reduced the height, you'll see when we bring the next architecture. I mean, you feel like when you improve the architecture, all people are telling us that they don't love architecture. I don't know if anyone ever goes out there. This, you know, this, this part of the Y is somewhat of a traffic, some people, and it's, it's building. This building here is only gonna be, I think we're thirty?
We're three levels, so it's like thirty-five.
Thirty-five on high, it's actually lower than the Y building they had again. This building, the Y, is a white-way two-story warehouse. It's not a traffic building, and it actually moves right onto the property. We're pulling our building back, we're actually getting low here, it doesn't get high right until you get back here. So if you look at pretty twisted Y, the white way system is a white warehouse, there's nothing of traffic in that. And that's, that leads me to the other thing. I know that there's been a lot of resistance because the Y is empty. I have nothing to do with the Y emptying. The Y, they need decisions about the Wilbur update, they want the Wilbur update, they're under construction with a new Y. I don't want the Y empty, but I believe the Y was built with me, and I wanted to do something in my community. So I live at the double terrace apartment in Upper Dublin. It's a hundred ninety-two units. I have people living there, and it's, it's a very messy apartment, people like live there. People from Adamant are moving into Upper Dublin, because there are no luxury ski gear apartments that are conducive for them in Upper Dublin. I, I mean, in Adamant, I wanted for my community to provide, and yes, I'm in the business, and I can tell you, there is profit on this, it's intensely profitable, but Bruce Polan, who are in Adamant, he wants to build a beautiful project that can cater to the people that are seventy day emission in, in, in this community. And they want to build a great project. And I understand. And I understand that there's concern, we're really, really working hard to address this concern, and I just, I don't know how to step back, I'm trying to, I feel like the pocket park, and I open any landscape being, if they want to work with the landscape being on, if they want to tell me what goes in that part, I'm completely open to that, and there will be no access in that part from the property. Some of the other questions, the water is not going to be an issue, it currently goes this way, but it already retains all the water we have, and there's coasts, we have to prove that we're not creating a water issue when you get to land development land, that's not going to be an issue. As far as the traffic, there is going to be, as we showed, a dramatic decrease of traffic, you don't have to believe it, what we should do, and I am willing to do, is we'll get the township's traffic engineer to review our traffic study before the next meeting and make comments on it, so that people can understand this somewhat else. I don't even know who the traffic engineer here at township is right now, they should review it, we put forward, and if they tell us what's wrong, we'll go, we'll study, we'll count, we'll do whatever is necessary.
Mr. Markman, regarding traffic, if you can remind me, did your existing traffic study from, that was previously submitted, did it address any cars turning right out onto Susquehanna Road, and then right onto Huntington Road to the light at the library? Would that happen, or looked at as I had to do, or is some people saying?
No, we counted traffic probably on the off of that platform, that's what we were trying to do, to compare the traffic generated by our building compared to that. The other thing, as far as, but I understand there would be consensus on it, there's discussion points, if they wanted to take that cul-de-sac over, you know, and some do it, some don't, you know, and here, our highway, here are the costs related since they made a cul-de-sac over. Now, I don't think there's consensus on that, so I don't want to make it, it's over what you want, but it was, you know, something we could do, that's something that was desirable. You know, another alternative is you can make it, you know, a long way over if you want, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do if they want it, and we are, we're intent on any issue congestion. Anything I can say as far as the road?
Michael, do they take the park space?
We will maintain the park space, yeah. And then as far as that is parking lot right now, so the problem we have is heavy landscaping along the buffer, so basically, heavy landscaping along the entire buffer and fencing here, and these are front-end park spaces. So we are providing underground parking, where essentially, I think it's 1.5 to 1.6 cars per unit. So most of the parking is in fact underground, that's what people prefer to park. These are highlighted open flow parking. We would do everything necessary, very, very quickly, to do whatever we can to be landscaping, put a fence in, leave existing trees to make sure that any of these parts, those, the lights don't affect. As far as lights, we've done shading before, the units that particularly affect, you know, the units that are high down from the lights, you can affect the surrounding area, there's potential shading, we can tint the windows, we've done that before, we consider that in here.
Do you like, put lights in the parking lot and on the road?
We can work on, what we generally do through the lights, you know, a lot of property, close residential property, different shadow box, so we can come back at a plan that would minimize any kind of lighting along this area right here. Anything else as far as?
Drive-in park?
I, you know, as far as the drive-in park, it's a competition issue, I like, now, I can tell you, we actually, ride by park, we're not understanding Double Terrace Park, we were looking at potentially partnering with them and doing something with them and their property. Essentially, they, they sent some people to my Double Terrace project, they pitched us the ride-by park, there wasn't anyone who was actually interested in the ride-by park from Double Terrace. All I can say is that in my experience with my Double Terrace project, is that the people are looking for something different than ride-by. I think ride-by is great, it's a good part of our community, I know a lot of people that live there, it's just a different kind of living, we offer no medical, we offer no meals, we don't offer, we have amenities, we have our occasional party, that's probably the only one that, our residents do not necessarily, they're not people that would move in ride-by park, they're moving into our places. The other reason why they're looking at this here is the fact that Double Terrace has a 65-person waiting list, and a third of our residents are in fact from Abundant, and they want to live in Abundant. My in-laws could not find, they're living in a place that they'd rather live in, something like this. We are trying to allow the senior residents of Abundant, they want a luxury apartment with amenities, a community-based situation, we do provide exercise facilities, a nice environment to be able to stay in the township, because everybody, I couldn't get my in-laws to live in, it was too far. There are a lot of people in Abundant, in my neighborhood, and the surrounding areas that want to stay, live in this type of environment, there's an actual need for it, we've seen it, because our residents in Upper Dublin would rather be here, and that's why we want to do this. Yes, there's issues that, I mean, we're working, and we're willing to work on whatever issues come up, the best we can. It's, as far as resources, senior apartments are not intense resources, now, the building, I guess, is tall, we try to remedy that fact, that's where this could be potentially economically about, we try to do it. But I just want to reiterate, we're not getting rid of the Y, the Y is leaving, the Y is not staying, why didn't they make that determination?
If they don't sell it, we sell it.
Just someone else saying, this will start over again, if someone else was another Bruce. Bruce and I, we know this is not a use that's for Abundant, we think it's very, we do shopping, we own the Abundant shopping center, we're not being a shopping center here, I wouldn't be a shopping center here. If I had 4,000 apartments, I built 3,000, I built probably 2,000, not any other townships have ever proposed an interest treaty on that apartment. I'm proposing an interest treaty, because I know there's a need, because it has, that's what I'm saying, I'm a true community, and it takes a spot for this type of use. So, you know, we're going to keep working to very, very closely, and we feel that we have, I mean, it sounds like to the audience, but we have done, we may be, we may do, we may change this to this, and we'll continue to listen, and continue to change it. Unless, as far as not levers, so we met the commissioners, they made, they said a very, they said a half a motion where the neighbors received, where we had known the township, the next step was to have a plan with the commissioners, meaning the neighbors, so no, we have not let levers for neighbors, which they've been communicating with through the commissioners or the township, and we are now up to, I can tell you, I guarantee you that there have now been 10 hours of meetings for the Penn State project. And the Penn State project, I don't think it was in fact a text amendment, and it was a text amendment that allowed for a taller building, allowed for, there's going to be, I think there's 400 students in that building. We're going to have a much, we have much less people here in a much lower track, so we, we, I didn't even talk to you. I'm just saying, in hair to that project, it's having much less people, it's less intense as far as the number of people and insert our voices, and that wasn't exactly a text amendment. I can tell you, out of all the changes, text amendments are, I understand these are local, the zoning code for this particular property had increased its conforming use, so the Y M C A government doesn't conform with this zoning code on that property. It became evident at some point, the zoning process, that the Y was going to leave, but it is only, and already been kind of set in motion, so it wasn't addressed. I guess if there's any other questions?
Mr. Markman, regarding the 24, that's being proposed, I think, unless I can decide, in general, I think that's a reasonable density for seeing a high-risk type of units. However, the 50% increase to 36, based on...
Based on...
What do you, I noticed something in the beginning, but I didn't catch.
So different, so there would be lowest provision, is that would be improvements to the property, green elements, energy efficiency, certain other things, but basically, and we can, kind of, we can go over that at the next meeting, propose, because, if this is something, we've done it before, so it's basically, you can think of it up to 36, and that gives the township control over the different control, you have, you stress certain things to achieve that sense.
Are you proposing then to revise the text and then map amendment submission for this to include what those are?
Yes, yes, and then we will, we'll have that at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Or next week?
Further, I will say.
Including, you know, that the house is...
Yes.
So that would be the map change, and then you would also revise what we already have, or currently have for the text amendment?
Yes.
To incorporate some of these...
So what we're hoping is, at the next meeting, every, whatever was supposed to be, this plus the potential text amendment to review, but no recounting any initiatives, so that when we come back, we have no recounting any initiatives to review, and allow the text amendment, will be reviewed by that in the township.
And my second to last question is, the existing Y M C A building, I'm sure we remember, a couple months ago, is there any way, I mean, it looks like it can incorporate that, that piece right into...
We tried, we looked at, and friendly issues, the inside is, it's got a 2-story, partially two, and just, and we looked at the condition of the building and the windows, and kind of the interior space right now, we found out people to incorporate it, but we did spend substantial amount of time trying to do that.
What about this, so that far would add some existing character here in store nature to develop, I mean, they thought it was a match burger.
No, I can tell you, I can, if you look at that, we had our, I did spend a lot of time trying to figure out how we do that, I'll work with it at the next meeting, if I don't, if I didn't.
This is quite attractive, and since I already addressed this, and my last question is for Lucy. Since it's so difficult to hear in this particular building, I don't know if the public would mind being squished in the town.
Well, we were here, on this side, by this day, we found it very difficult with the sound system here, so the R R government, that we changed that, because it's extremely difficult to hear whatever they say. So we'll talk with township staff, and I think that would be relevant, the next meeting, we do a lot of work.
Sorry, I thought I saw somebody over there that tagged one comment that...
Yeah, he wanted to speak, he... Yeah, but, I thought it was two more people, but I guess it was just those...
I just didn't want to cut it, it was that discretion.
Oh, yeah, there's anything, they think that the past office said, and then, and rest that quickly, I appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Michael Frayer, 765, I'm in Brooklyn. Kudos to the development team, I do this for a living myself on market tech, so I understand kind of how you present this, and what you show, and what you don't show. And I think that, and what isn't really clear, I think, in presentation, is kind of the magnitude and scale. I mean, we keep looking at this same plan, right, you talk about plenty, but if you were to kind of zoom out to maybe mile out, this is the largest building, you know, for blocks around, as an example, I just think that that's made this way away from the scale. To give you a sense of scale on Susquehanna, what was noted is the schoolhouse, kind of right across the street, which was great, but it was more, it's kind of a, kind of a hush zone for the aesthetics. But to give you us a scale of that street, that's over football field, that's 340, 350 people. I mean, we've all been to Eagle's, right, so imagine if that's like, it's just inappropriate for what's going on, especially when you see the openness of the cemetery, you know, sort of west. I just think that there's, the massive building itself could be done with a little bit more sensitivity, especially to the schoolhouse across the street, and to the pedestrian experience on Susquehanna. And I think there's a lot of things that you can do as far as, as far as the aesthetics, the precedents that were shown on screen, they were really great, except for the fact that we wanted to lower regular corner, which you didn't talk about, I think that in itself kind of will be one as well. I mean, the fewest of the precedents, I can't touch your stuff here, I guess it's the other presentation, but the, the precedents that we talked about, I'm doing it for a living, kind of the kids in Alice, and the great kind of architectural character that are shown on those precedents, that cost, I just want to be sure that this development team has hold those figures, and not to the past niche that's on that lower regular corner.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. My last one.